Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to another fabulous edition of the Greater Lawrence Chamber of Commerce Chamber Chat. My name is Brad Klaufenstein. I'm president of the Greater Lawrence Chamber. Thank you all for joining us. Today, we have a fantastic guest, city county councillor from the 3rd District. Councillor Dan Boots is our guest. Welcome, Councillor Boots.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure and honor to be here.
So, let's get started for those who don't necessarily know you real well. Your district covers about the western 3rd of Marion, or not Marion County, but Lawrence Township, and then you go on into Washington Township, but you have all of Castleton and some of that Nora area. So just tell everybody a little bit about yourself and go on about how you got into politics, and then we'll do questions.
Sure. First, I do appreciate the opportunity to be here today. And just a little bit about myself, it is, do represent District 3, which if you looked on the county map, it's roughly between 1 and 2 o'clock on the clock dial, Keystone over to Johnson Road, up to 96th Street, down 69, roughly down to Kessler and Fall Creek is the general area. So I do cover 7 of the most western precincts in Lawrence Township, and 20 of the most eastern precincts in Washington Township. So that's the geographic area. Born and raised in central Indiana, went to a high school just north of 96th Street that will remain unnamed, but have ever, in my adult life, lived south of 96th Street. And kids are North Central grads, all through Washington Township. We live right near Graham Road, so we're kind of straddling not only school districts, but the geographic area as well. So Purdue undergrad, IU grad, been working, yes, we need more boilers in this world, don't we?
Boiler up!
Snyder.
That's right.
And the, been between school and work, been working downtown in Indy, going on close to 35 years. Have always lived in the northeast area. Our first house was right off Hague Road, across the street from Lawrence North. So I lived in Lawrence Township for our first house and first two kids being born, and then just moved a few blocks west and been in the same area for 30 years. So feel pretty comfortable about the area and what's going on, its people. And what really got me involved in what I'm doing currently, I've never viewed myself as a politician as much as a public servant who has, was given an opportunity to get involved through our current councillor who approached me about retiring. And I had worked with her for many times, or many times over many years with issues in our area, and thought I might be interested in the opportunity and thought, you know, kind of flattering to think I could do the job, and she thought highly enough of me to bring it to my attention. So that's what planted the seed and decided to run. And I've had some great support, even from some people on the screen, wink, wink, Representative Hamilton. So, and just very, feel very fortunate to have gotten the support of the area and trying to keep schools going and economic development going, trails and greenways. There's a lot going on in up in the northeast part of the county. So it's an exciting time to be involved.
So, let me ask you, well, first, you told us a lot about where you live. What do you do professionally?
Professionally, I'm an intellectual property attorney here in town. I'm with the firm of Dentons, Bingham, Greenbaum. My office is downtown and I've been with them going on 20, I hate to say it, it'd be 23 years next month. We've changed names several times, but it's been the same core of attorneys in the same location for going on nearly 25 years, for me.
That's awesome. So, tell us, what are you passionate about? I mean, everybody gets into this for one reason or another. Sometimes they have a cause, sometimes it's trails, greenways. What was the reason you wanted to get involved?
Probably my primary initiatives involved economic development and in the area, particularly the Castleton and 82nd Street corridor. And when I say economic development, I mean as much economic revitalization. It's not just refilling empty storefronts as much as it is rethinking and reimagining what it means to have a retail area as dense as Castleton in our backyard, which is, you know, a top 5% desired retail spot in the entire United States because of its convergence of major thoroughfares and its demographics and its impressive economic data. So all those attractive features also can work against us. And as we've seen what happens in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, uncontrolled growth is not a wise thing. So now 40, 50 years later, I think we need to unwind the ball a little bit and rethink what we're doing and be much more strategic in revitalizing some of the underutilized areas that are now even declining. And the definition of retail has changed so considerably in the last 25 years. So do we need so much bricks and mortar? I would say we do not. So we need to reimagine, how do we interact as a community? And just bringing more families to the area, make the entire area of Castleton and 82nd Street more accessible, family friendly, less cars, more bikes, more foot traffic, and more greenways. So between Castleton and the Nickel Plate Trail is another big plank in my platform, if you will, to revitalize the abandoned, or vacated, I should say, railway, the Nickel Plate, and turning that into a Monon-like greenway right down through the heart of our district. So those are my main initiatives for this area. Countywide, there's a lot of additional issues that we're facing, of course, but we'd have to have several chamber chats to cover all those.
Well, we'll start right now. My thoughts are, Castleton was born from sprawl, but now it's also a victim of that same sprawl. Indianapolis, for better or for worse, we're not hemmed in by oceans and large rivers and lakes. So we can just kind of spread out in all directions. How do we reinvent Castleton to make it relevant moving forward as well as containing that sprawl that causes people to keep going further out and not come back into Marion County?
Sure. And that is the $64,000 question. What, and I think that is a mindset that the city has adopted to realize, are we going to give up on the northeast side of the county and just give it to Fishers in Noblesville? Or are we going to retain this vibrancy and keep the northeast part in the Lawrence area and the Castleton, which has a lot of historic value? I don't think people appreciate the history of Castleton High School, for example. A lot of people don't even realize that there was such a city. And then it was a major train stop between downtown and going north. And the train station is still there. Just been moved around a couple of times and, you know, has housed a lingerie store, so times have changed a little bit. But I think those things get lost in all the white noise that go on. So, and if people haven't, I seriously recommend to go to look up the Castleton Revitalization Plan. It was a 14-month study done by the DMD, just released in February, a good three weeks before everything got shut down. So it landed like a thud. And part of our challenge has been to keep the interest and the momentum in that plan and all the recommendations in it alive and well. So we've done that through, I'm on the board of Benford Redevelopment and Growth, BRAG. And we've held two summer meetings in person at the Sycamore Reserve Senior Community, the new development on Craig Street, to share the plan and to share our initiatives and have different speakers coming in. And we've, obviously with a limited audience, we've only been able to invite a handful of people. And we've been fortunate that Representative Hamilton has spoken twice to our group. So we have people from the city, people from the state, and people from the local community groups to discuss all the moving parts of the plan. And what we're all trying to do to further particularly the Nickel Plate Trail, which is one of the major initiatives coming out of that and the major recommendations to really kickstart some of the economic revitalization through the heart of Castleton is to reinvigorate that trail and to activate the edges. And, which is much easier said than done, as we all know. And we're learning quickly that urban planning plans are great on paper, but putting them into reality is a whole different battle. So we've already, through some of our community groups, fighting zoning issues and parcel issues. So when you got overreaching public plans, dealing with private property rights and ongoing development, it makes for an interesting mix. So that's kind of what we're doing in Castleton, is keeping the ball rolling forward. For the Nickel Plate Trail, just for purposes of open disclosure, our initial seed money that we were really hoping for, $5 million grant from the MP, DNR, through the Next Level Trails Program, that entire program was canceled, unfortunately. So we're on to Plan B. But as we see in, most people know in public projects, there's one step forward, two steps back, one step sideways. So we have not lost enthusiasm, we just are going to replan and trying to be very creative in ways of finding initial funding to pave that path from 96th Street, ultimately down to 39th Street to tie into the state fairgrounds.
So, I know I've seen this number before, you might have it on top of your head. What's the dollar figure that they're estimating to, just for the Nickel Plate portion, to pave that from 96 to where it ties in down at the fairgrounds?
For infrastructure design, there's a lot more than just throwing pavement down, obviously. There's a lot of infrastructure always involved in drainage and ecological, environmental issues. The ballpark number is $10 million.
$10 million? So, and how much of that has been budgeted so far?
Unfortunately, the city of Indianapolis has zero funds for trails and sidewalks. They have to create additional programming and reallocate funds to build a lot of these new greenways. That's why most of these projects rely heavily on grants, whether it be through a state project like the DNR's Next Level Trails, or federal or philanthropic organizations to really get things kickstarted. And then the city and municipal agencies often come in on a matching perspective because the dollars are just too great for them to handle with all the other pressing needs.
All right, well, I'll kick you to 20.
I'll take it.
Brad, can I add a thought real quick?
Absolutely.
Well, I, as Dan knows, this is all near and dear to my heart. So first, I just want to share with everyone how crucial it is that we have Dan, who cares so much and knows so much about this project at City Hall now, because it really is, you know, a city initiative, to work with all of these stakeholders to move us in the right direction with this redevelopment. And the vision at MikeHasston.com is beautiful. You learn so much if you go to that website that Dan directed you to. But his, with his professional background in the law, you know, keeping laser focused on the zoning, making sure stuff that we don't want to come in, doesn't come in in the meantime, while we're trying to pull the right folks together to have something really substantial happen. So thank you, Dan. And then just quickly on the state funding for the Nickel Plate. On March 5th, right before everything shut down, I launched a bipartisan, bicameral Trails Caucus in the legislature, which was good timing because in May, the governor ended the Next Level Trails Program because of COVID funding concerns. And so this caucus, and again, bipartisan, bicameral, we have, my co-chairs are from across the state. We're all very actively working to at least bring back some of those dollars. And I can't say this definitively, but we're fairly certain that the Nickel Plate is towards the top of the list of receiving those dollars. Again, no promises at all, but there are lots of folks working to make this happen. Not, you know, Dan and I and lots of others. It's, we've done, our community has done a great job of building awareness about the value of that investment as catalyst for Castleton redevelopment. So thanks for letting me add to Dan's great work.
You're welcome. And I'm a big cyclist as well, and I look at that portion, obviously the Monon's complete all the way up to Westfield and beyond. And I believe that there's a line now that's tying Westfield into Noblesville that would go to the Nickel Plate. And yeah, with the Nickel Plate, if that comes back down, suddenly that becomes a very large, 30 or 40 mile circular trail that I think becomes a destination for cyclists and trail enthusiasts. So that's just my two cents. So, we've got some other people here. Questions for the councillor while we have him with us? Anyone? Well then, I will ask another question because you started talking about the budget and how there's currently $0 budgeted for trails, at least in the county budget. How is the county doing on money as far as tax collections and revenues? Are things going to start getting tight? And where do you see things going?
Interesting question. And we, that is the big one we're all embracing, embracing for. As, you may know, it's a complicated formula of how different levels of municipality and governments are funded. And we, at least knock on wood, are probably more insulated from real-time dips in revenue than other. For example, the state has seen its revenue drop over, you know, a billion dollars in three or four months because of gas taxes and things of that sort. And no one's driving, there's no gas tax, there's not that federal flow-through. We, on the other hand, have, our budgets are set almost biennial. We set our budget annually, but money we get from the state, for example, is set biennially. So every two years. So we're really kind of biding time and have current money that is already fixed. We don't get property taxes or income taxes till a much more later time. So the current economic downturn has not hit our bank accounts yet, but it will. So right now, the current budget of roughly $1.3 billion for 2021 is essentially flat from 2020. We did not want to, unfortunately, add much new programming, reallocated some things, and have dictated that every agency must put in reserve 5% for, to give us some buffer and cushion for unexpected consequences coming to us in 2021. So, the bad news is, there's not a whole lot of new bells and whistles out there in 2021. The good news is, we've had a pretty conservative fiscal approach in the last four to five years due to just, I think, much more prudent fiscal management. Have much better bank accounts and rainy days and general fund money than we ever had. And dealing with, the challenge is going to be creating new revenue sources to generate funds for new projects going forward. Because otherwise, we are robbing Peter to pay Paul and just shifting things around, but the pie is only so big. So, right now, we're just keeping our fingers crossed and holding our breath and working with a flat budget.
So, I've got to imagine that food and beverage taxes are just getting crushed right now. I've heard a proposal that the Convention Center wants to do an expansion. What are your thoughts on, A, moving forward, is there going to be enough of a need for convention space? That that's a wise expansion? And then how are we going to fund it, especially if revenues that are currently funding those sorts of things are way down?
Yeah. Well, there are plans. In fact, it came before the budget was set Monday evening and presented at our Municipal Economic Development Committee. There's going to be a new hotel and going to expand the Convention Center across into the Pan Am Plaza Square. So that's all going to be a hotel and part of a convention center. I am for it. All the evidence I've seen and the statistics and data I've seen suggests that we have maxed out our ability to host conventions and that we are, for our size, our peer group, we're at the top, ready to jump up to the next level, but we're maxed out by particularly convention space. I know that's hard to believe when you walk through the 500 Ballroom and you can barely see the walls or so far away. But the convention business is a multi-billion dollar a year business. And that brings millions of people into the city that really floats a lot of the downtown economy, particularly with the food and beverage tax. You know, that's why it is a little pricier to eat and drink downtown. Because a lot of that money, though, is staying downtown. So, and it's a, paying for it and the funding is through a series of bonds. It's not going to hurt us a whole lot. I mean, we're going to have to pay it over time. But again, because of our very excellent credit ratings, we enjoy some of the best interest rates we've had in the last 50 years in the public bond market, again, due to our fiscal management and our building of our general funds and rainy day funds. All three major credit agencies have improved their ratings of Indianapolis over the last two or three years. And that just makes our ability to raise money much easier. It saves millions of dollars in the long run when you're talking, you know, $200 million bonds and things of that sort.
Okay. So, I touched on restaurants and bars. What are your thoughts on helping them recover? They seem to be the ones that are hardest hit during all this. Do you have any thoughts on what we can do to kind of bring that industry back?
Yeah, we've done, and I know this is somewhat of a controversial thing with Mass Ave and Broad Ripple Avenue, for example, blocking it off. But all of our surveys, and when I say ours, I mean collectively, the council and the mayor's administration, what they're doing and so on, is that people were willing to reopen. It was just they, we weren't getting enough people downtown. I've been back in my office, for example, for nearly two months. I am still the only person on the entire 25th floor of Market Tower downtown. So I have the entire floor to myself most days. And so I think there's just a continuing lingering fear of downtown that I think is unfounded. It does have some downtown issues that we're dealing with, with panhandling and homelessness. And the damage and destruction is slowly being repaired as fast as flat glass makers can manufacture glass. And there's only so many professional installation crews in town that handle, you know, 20 by 20 planes or plates of glass. So as fast as those crews and manufacturers can generate the glass, we're rebuilding downtown. But there are the, for example, just this week was announced the music venue, independent music venue grants. There's grants last week, $300,000 for community homelessness and crime prevention. There's now a downtown ambassador program where there's going to be just volunteers walking around, helping people, directing people, increasing the safety downtown. As you may have heard the big announcement, $750,000 last week. Increased police patrols on foot and on bikes, adding 150 cameras to the, what's called the B-Link system. So essentially, most of downtown, on every corner, will be monitored. You know, if you've traveled, I've been fortunate enough to travel Europe quite a bit, particularly in London, you can't go anywhere where you're not on video. And some people see that invasion of privacy. Personally, I see that as a very low-hanging piece of crime prevention. People on camera, very less likely to do malfeasance. So enhancing the safety downtown to just bring more families, increase convention traffic. I think that's really what we need to do. Because in what the chamber did do with the Indy Chamber, with the PPP program early on, we funded up to, with Lily's assistance, close to $25 million to turbocharge downtown payroll employees, just in particularly countywide, but also downtown and also focusing on minority and women's business owners, which tend to be hit hardest through this, particularly the pandemic and some of the civil unrest that caused damage to various XPE businesses. Trying to give those businesses a hand up, get back on their feet. Now it's an issue of just getting downtown and back up and running. Latest stats are maybe 10 to 15% of the downtown workforce is back. And it needs to, needs to grow quickly here, I think, to get everything back on its feet. Because I, I fear the economic tsunami, as I call it, that's a couple miles offshore, is going to be as bad as the public health issues if we don't take aggressive actions. Because here in Indianapolis, again, we've got a delayed hit to our bank accounts. And I think this prolonged economic downturn and what's resulting in the greater unemployment and businesses shutting and so many furloughing of employees, long-term is going to have, and I'm not belittling the health issues and the deaths, but I think we also need to keep our eye on the ball that we need to get the Indianapolis economy and Marion County back up and running as quickly as we can and as safely as we can.
So, and this is a very broad, open-ended question. So you can take as much or little as time as you want to answer it. So in hindsight, what did we do right in the last six months? What have we done wrong? What would you have changed? And what do you think's the best path moving forward?
Wow, for an elected official, that's a pretty loaded question, Brad. But I will say, and I've gone on record, so I'm not uncovering or disclosing anything confidential. Personally, I was disappointed in the, in what I thought maybe was too much destruction allowed the first couple nights. We are still recovering from that. It really was a gut punch or a throat punch, whatever you want to call it. And we are awaiting a report on what happened hour by hour during that first weekend because we want to know what happened. Because we don't yet know, did we do what's a preferred practice? Did we do things that we should not have? Were we not tough enough on some of the protesting? Were we too tough and that exacerbated the problem? Did we cause and trigger some of that? Or did we allow it to happen too much? That's a big point of curiosity for me. We are working hard with as much Corona relief money as we can get. We've got $168 million that we've gone, we as a council have appropriated probably half of that, roughly $100 million. So we're putting the money and pumping the money in as quickly as we can through various programs. And it's really, it's really skewed reality between the pandemic and the civil issues and public justice reform. So it's hard for me, particularly as a new councillor, to, to be honest, feel like I'm talking even competently about it. Do I even have a basis to evaluate? It's, you know, it's truly, they call it a part-time job, but in these circumstances, to do as I feel, to do the job right, it is a full-time job. And learning on the fly, as we are, particularly in this situation where there is no Harvard case study on how do you react when your city's shut down by a virus? There's just not much precedent there. So all levels of government, you know, from federal to local, are really learning on the fly, doing as best as they can based on the information they have. And as we all know, your goal in decision-making is, I wish I knew everything I needed to know to make a right decision. But that's not reality. You got to make a decision on a point in time based on what's in front of you. And the post-mortem will determine whether that was a right or wrong decision. So I'm hesitant to point fingers yet, if at all, if it's even necessary, until we really let the dust settle and could really do some retroactive review of. and can really do some retroactive review of incidents and money and the effectiveness of money. As you know, kind of in the fog of war, things happen so quickly and it's very seldom the most efficient thing done because you don't have the time to study all the preferred practices. If there's an emergency, you address it the best you can as quickly as you can. And then you learn upon hindsight whether you could have done a better job or not. So that's, I think, where we'll find ourselves.
Welcome to the council. Any other questions for the counselor while we have him with us? Adam, might want to unmute yourself?
Thanks, Brad. Appreciate it. Councilman, just a, I know we talked a bit about the, the Castleton proposed improvements and every, and, and how that's kind of shaking out. Are there other like residential revitalization efforts that are going to be made for that immediate and surrounding area, just kind of as a broader approach to beautification of Castleton?
Yeah, there's, it, it'd be tough to give you all the recommendations out of the, it's 180-page plan with about 10 or 12 recommendations. But another one is just beautification of 82nd Street through there. Try to cut, literally cut down on traffic. Pinch the roads in a little bit, give it a little more intimate feeling, add some beautification and some landscaping and medians and, and more sidewalks. Because the, being such a vehicular-based commerce area has turned out now, 40 years later, to be our arch enemy. We're doing things to, for example, we had a recent zoning battle locally that we just, since there's no organized organization yet, that's pursuing post-report, the implementation group, if you will. Between BRAG and GACC, which I also work closely with, the Greater Allisonville Community Council, we kind of have an informal land use committee, a couple of people from each board, and we just monitor what happens in the area. We get all the zoning variance petitions as a registered neighborhood group and even as an individual. Anybody on the screen that wants to get mailed a notice of a zoning petition in your area, all you have to do is sign up on the city website and you'll get a personal notice of something happening in your area. And if you're registered, that also gives you a matter of right to request extensions and hearings, because there's a oftentimes it hits your mailbox and there's a hearing that week, if not the next day, sometimes. So so there's a lot of, again, to answer your question directly, Adam, beautification projects. A lot of the nickel plate plan involves particularly at 82nd Street, a total mixed-use concept and a very, what's kind of a trend in urban planning. In fact, it's a lot of Lawrence's master plan around the Fort Ben campus is the Fort Ben Village. And there's the plan for Castleton involves three or four villages. A Castleton Village and Allisonville Village and Howland Greenway area, which is a, currently it's, we call it Greenway. It's currently called Howland Ditch. It's just a major thoroughfare that goes through Castleton. Many people don't know, but a lot of Castleton Square area is in a 100-year flood plain, some in a 500-year flood plain. That's what the lake is there for, and it's a major water thoroughfare that goes through that area. And so that by law hampers some of the things you can do in the way of redevelopment until you take affirmative steps to remove those parcels out of a flood plain. And then that's some things we've already got going and studying how best to do that and what parcels can we take out of that? Because I, I think the current trend, and I believe in this trend, is we need to get more families and more people of all ages. Need to have varied housing in that area. Can't all just be mixed-use, one or two-bedroom apartments above a Scotty's or a Starbucks. And as you know, there's two big senior communities just opening up during COVID in that area, which is an amazing economic feat. There, in fact, there's a ribbon cutting tomorrow at Encore Senior Community on 75th Street. Sycamore Reserve, I already mentioned on Craig Street, just opened this spring. Two multimillion-dollar senior communities opening up right in the area. So I think people realizing we need to provide housing in our areas for all age groups. Because it takes that type of synergy of different generations to really make it thrive. And it can't be everyone getting in the car and have to drive across the street because 82nd is a six-lane death trap trying to cross on foot. We need to get rid of that and, and settle the community down and make it much more of, I think, a bi-modal accessible village concept with, in more green ways. So that literally means, you know, as I've said in some of my campaign, even some of my photography promotions, some of those strip centers on Castleton have crosshairs on them in my plans. I, I want to see a bulldozer, not a, not a repaving truck. There's just some, there's stuff in there that's just, that adds to lower quality retail space when you have all that vacancy. And you just get businesses, in my opinion, that aren't the type you want to attract to get a new, forward-looking, vibrant community. So but that's all, as I said, urban plans and aspirations are one thing, and we have a lot of them. Getting private developers to come along and do what you want to do is a different thing. So therein lies the rub.
So all right, any other questions for the counselor? He's been very generous with his time. I've got the last one, which, yes, go ahead.
Toss out one thing because it's just such a big issue and I just want to make sure everyone's thinking about it. And, and, and that is just kind of the public outcry right now about justice reform and Black Lives Matter and defund the police. There's a lot going on in that area. In my opinion, and from my perspective, and it's not my agenda, no one's defunding the police. We're not dismantling the police. That's probably, from a marketing standpoint, a horrible tagline for what the true initiative is. But what we are doing, and there's already a lot of things in place to kind of reimagine what public safety means in our community. And what can we do to address some of the holistic causes that lead to a rise in crime? Statistics show, and I know statistics can be massage sometimes, but if you look at them, in my opinion objectively, the more we've spent on public safety and the larger our police force and our EMS and, and everyone, the more that's grown, we have not seen a commensurate reduction in crime and statistics. So that means we need to do additional things. And that's part of the reimagining. When, when you hear defund, I hear reallocate, reprioritize. We need to look at where the money's going, because again, we do not have, we're not like the federal government. I can't call Denver Mint and say print another $2 billion and send it to Indianapolis because they want to build a nickel plate trail. We do not have a money press in the basement of the city county building. So we have to take the current pie and, and find the Peters that we can rob to pay Paul to create some of these new initiatives. So that is kind of what's going on and, and you'll see more about that. We've seen, we were successful in getting a new use of force policy adopted by the IMPD. Two significant parts of that are no chokeholds, no knock warrants. Looking at a general orders committee that has more civilian involvement. Looking at a citizens' action complaint board that's going to have more citizens' involvement. It, as they say, it's putting more of the public back into public safety. And it's not, in, we're not doing anything, at least not part of what I'm involved in. While we do that, I would never do anything and support anything that would ever make a safety officer's job harder or more dangerous. That is, I think, very counterproductive. We cannot do anything, even if it's moving funds, I would not ever support moving funds that makes that policeman's job harder or puts them more at personal risk. It's already filled with risk and danger. And it's, you know, I doubt there's a couple of us on the screen that have the resolve to do what many of our police do every day. So I just want to kind of educate the public as best we can of where the direction of things are going. And that Indianapolis, in spite of what people think, is still a very conciliatory, I think, public environment whereby the police, we talk to the police chiefs regularly, council, the city, Black Lives Matter, eight can't wait orgs. It's not like there's a lot of political forces just at each other's throats. We're all in this together. When Black Lives Matters has a protest, the city and the police sit down with them and plan it. Because we, we, we want us, one, protect them. Everyone has a First Amendment right. So we literally are in all this, in this together. And I know that sounds cliche, but if you don't have that philosophy and don't appreciate that it takes us to accommodate these competing interests and work together for common resolution, that's where we're going to have bigger problems than we're currently having. So I just want to put that on everyone's radar, that there's a lot going on in that area and you'll see more of it throughout the end of the year and going forward.
Nice. Well, final question. You're going out to eat somewhere in Lawrence Township. So imagine all of Lawrence Township, Castleton, 71st and Benford, the fort out by Geist. Where are you going?
Wow. That's loaded. Let, let me figure out where my constituents and votes come from before I pick that restaurant. Well, I'm a, I'm a big fan of Giacomo's at the fort. I've also had a, a couple of very nice experiences at the Fort Ben Pub. And Jim George is a friend of mine. So Georgia's Neighborhood Grill at 71st is, is a big stop of ours, as is La, La Hacienda. Just because our, anytime our four kids are growing out of the house, but anytime they're back, one night must be at La Hacienda.
Three Lawrence Township locations.
Yeah, exactly. So, and the name escapes me, but the restaurant out of Geist at the Marina.
Oh, Wolfies.
Is that its current name?
Yeah, it is, it is currently Wolfies.
Yes, yes. Yeah, sorry. It's, I haven't been there yet this year, but so yeah, plenty to eat out there and have always enjoyed. And I'm learning more and more as I go, and we haven't even talked about all the reuse authority and what's going on at the Fort Ben. I just find that extremely exciting. From a public official's standpoint, an urban planner, to have undeveloped land right in the middle of something, that's a dream come true and very exciting opportunities. And so I've already have plans with Alitha Dunston to visit out there and really kind of dive deep to what's going on and with the reuse authority board and just trying to learn as I go too about what we can learn to maybe apply to the Castleton and in the whole area of 82nd Corridor, as well as going south along Benford and Allisonville in our area, because we think that nickel plate could spur economic development all up and down its corridor.
So, yeah, I, I agree that the whole redevelopment thing fascinates me. I actually moved to the fort a year ago and I love it. I mean, where else in Indiana do you have a historic downtown that has a 1,700-acre state park that's walking distance from its core and yet room to grow? So, so yeah, anytime you want to come out and have a beverage, you let me know and it will explore the fort. So, councilors.
Let me throw out one last, reaching back in time. Our, I had our 32nd wedding anniversary last week. And our wedding reception was at the Fort Ben Officers Club, 32 years ago. So I've been familiar with that area and been out in that area and for several decades and, and it's got a spot, fond spot in my heart. So even though I don't represent all that area, I have a lot of ties to it and I can assure you, we'll do all I can to further protect this interest as we go forward.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you for your time. First and foremost, you mentioned you are a part-time counselor and you gave us a solid hour of your time today. So that is greatly appreciated. Thank you all for joining us here live and in person. Keep in mind, things coming up tonight, it's going to be a very hot Lawrence Chamber Cruise Inn on Otis Avenue at Lotton Loop. Bring beers or Porter Books and Bread will be there selling sandwiches, soft drinks and beer. So you can bring your own or buy from Will. Tomorrow is the ribbon cutting, as Dan mentioned, at Encore Senior Living at noon. If you're available, come join us there. Let's see, after that, we've got the Greater Lawrence Chamber Golf Outing on September 8th. That's the day after Labor Day. September 15th, we have our Breakfast Connections, is it Breakfast Connections?
Yeah.
Yes, Breakfast Connections at the Reset Center at 42nd Post Road. That'll be a great opportunity to come out. And thank you very much to the Lawrence Township Schools. They are now our title sponsor for our annual membership meeting on October 1st that is featuring Governor Eric Holcomb as our keynote speaker. So once again, thank you all for joining us. Be sure to join us at Chamber Activities and we'll see you next Wednesday.
Wonderful. Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.